Apologize.
Like to thank you for your patience. Welcome to today's meeting. Our chairman, Mark Klecker, was unsure whether he'd be able to attend or not. Here's he's not going to be able to attend. So Rich, as vice chair, you can act in his stead.
You want ready to proceed?
I believe we are, yes. Excuse me, I can call the meeting to order. By way of role, Carl, Mr. Spiker, Mr. Schmante, Mr. Wizerik are present. We do have a forum.
Okay. For approval of the February minutes.
Motion to prove.
Oh, second. Yep, all second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the next item is review and recommended draft of short-term regulations. Jake, you want to review anything that changed or we need to know before we proceed?
Rich, before we enter that, there was a revision to the agenda that we did post late last week. So prior to the short-term rental discussion, we do have an update on the Fairmont McClellan neighborhood plan.
Okay.
I believe Kathy and Erin are going to speak to that.
Yeah, I'll just do a, sorry, Rich. Just a quick update. This is that we talked last time about the neighborhood strategic plans that the city is undertaking and how the planning commission wanted to get a little bit more involved early on in the processes. We started our next strategic plan will be with Fairmont McClellan. And so we have been working, we've taken our time because we really prefer these plans to be done when we can meet face to face. And so we've been taking our time just scheduling, getting everything scheduled and working with our Eastside Grassroots Coalition to get them on board up to speed with the schedule and the process. Eastside Grassroots Coalition is a partnership between the the Sisters of Mercy and the U E C D C, which is the organization that is run by Gary Horton. So if you know him, you know what U E C D C, not everyone knows that acronym. But they've created a coalition to work on neighborhood, neighborhood strategies to help revitalize that the Fairmont McClellan or portion of the Fairmont McClellan area. So there are, there are strategic partners in moving forward with developing a plan. And this will also be the first plan that we will have done in a neighborhood that already has their own strategic plan. The ones that the city does is a little different. It's more focused on built environment issues as much as possible. But I think we've done a very good job blending our approach with the needs of that they had identified through their strategic planning process, which was completed in 2018. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin Carey. And I think if she has the ability to share a screen, she does have some visuals for you. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. I will share my screen here just to give everyone a brief overview of the area that we are talking about. This is the Fairmont McClellan planning area, an area we're focused. It's identified as the neighborhood, a neighborhood strengthening area. So it does have a lot of very strong residential blocks. It's bounded by the Bayfront Connector over to Bird Drive and then East 12th down to the Bayfront Connector again. It does have a higher homeownership rate than, and then some of our others with about 60% homeownership in the area. But as Kathy said, so we're blending. This is the first time we're blending, you know, recommendations from your focus as well as the recommendations from a neighborhood plan that's already been completed by a different organization. So we're taking the recommendations from your focus, which are, you know, proactive code enforcement, demolishing some blighted structures, updating commercial properties at Broad and Buffalo, providing some financial incentives for home repairs for homeowners, beautifying Fairmont Parkway and then implementing the master plan at McClellan Park, which is already underway. So there's some, some of the takeaways from your focus. And then Eastside Grassroots Coalition, which Kathy has mentioned was that partnership between U E C D C and the House of Mercy also had some recommendations for their neighborhood after they had done some door-to-door outreach and some focus groups for their plan. So those included a lot of the same things in terms of infrastructure. So homeownership promotion, rehabilitating properties, fixing up some sidewalks and crosswalks in the neighborhood, and then cleaning and greening some public space in parks and then also in vacant lots. Another focus of theirs is to develop the Sabaccio Business Park and then also support businesses that are already existing in the neighborhood. And then one of the kind of unique things about their strategic plan, they really want to foster youth development. And they actually, they employed some, some students this past summer to do some landscaping and different things, but they want to be able to grow that program to provide more activities for youth in the neighborhood. They have some other recommendations on the screen. You can see there including health, updating their organizational governance, and then attracting some more private and public investment. So what we've done is we've tried to blend these into a couple of goals for this update of the plan that we're going to undertake here over the next couple of months. So again, we're going to prioritize infrastructure improvements. Those are the, the things we already have data collected on. So those are include vacant lots that have become dumping sites, sidewalk improvements. We've collected data on where there's missing sidewalk and where there's sidewalk that's in need of repair. So we have that for the entire planning area. Now that active Erie is completed, we'll be sure to include its recommendations in this neighborhood plan as well. And then the group also owns a lot of vacant lots that they'd like to see activated in some way. So we're going to work with the community to develop a plan to activate those vacant lots. And then we'll identify a five-year plan for some problem properties that are in the area. What you see on the screen is, is the property condition survey. So that's just of exterior property conditions. So we've already collected that information. And now from that, we can build a plan to get structures blighted that need to be blighted. We can prioritize, you know, properties that are average that need a little bit more assistance in terms of rehabilitation, we can prioritize those in the plan as well. And then we're going to include, since this group does have a focus on youth, we're going to include a youth portion of the planning process. So we're going to have youth help us catalog street trees using G I S so that they are out in the community interfacing with residents, but also getting some G I S training alongside that. And then also, we're going to work with the group to advance their Sabaccio Park plans. So in terms of next steps for the planning process, right now, we've just been, you know, we've been meeting with our, our core team with U E C D C and the House of Mercy and working towards having a public meeting, hopefully in the second week of April. We don't have a date set for that yet, but we, once we do, hopefully Jake can send that out to folks on the planning commission if they're interested in logging on. It'll be hybrid. So you can log on virtually and watch the meeting, but still have a chance to interact if you have questions or comments or anything. So yeah, so we're hoping to finish the plan up by the end of the year, but in terms of next steps, we're looking at a, a public meeting, probably the second week of April. So if anyone has questions for me right now, that is fine. Otherwise, hopefully Jake can send out that public meeting date and let everyone know when that is.
And just to point out the property conditions map that Erin was showing, Erin, could you pull that up real quick? You, you, the, the group has seen this before. It was, it's a little blurry just because of the scale of it. That's the house by house survey that, that, that the city that we've been doing. It looks like only about half or a third of the the area is, has not been assessed. But just to point out, those are either public housing, there's a lot of public housing in this area or industrial, commercial, which is not assessed. So and public housing tends to be well-maintained too. So just to give you a sense, because that looks very different than some of the other neighborhoods that we've done this assessment. And that's just because of the high number of industrial, commercial properties and, and public housing. So just wanted to point that out that it has been fully assessed with under our property conditions survey process. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you. Ready to proceed with discussing the draft recommendations and the final vote mentioned? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I think we'll be back once we have a drafted plan, hopefully towards the fall, we should have a draft plan and that would be presented then to the committee.
This was just an update. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Well, then the next piece of business would be the approval of recommendations for the short-term rental regulation. Correct?
Yes. Thank you, Rich. So just by way of background and, and Tess and I wanted to get everybody up to speed on where we're at today with the current draft at last month's meeting. Most of the elements of, of the amendments that we need to be made to the zoning ordinance to accommodate short-term rentals were agreed upon, but there were a couple of elements, couple of the conditions, operational conditions that were still a little bit in question. And we wanted to get some clarification from the city solicitor's office on whether or not a couple of those provisions would potentially could be challengeable or just to make sure the language was solid before we brought what I think is essentially a final draft back to the planning commission for review. Tessa could outline a couple of the minor changes that have been made since last month's draft, which is what planning commission members have in front of them today.
Okay. Any of the commission members have questions or comments about the draft that's in front of you?
No.
Okay. If that's the case, I'm fine with it. Can we any discussion that you wish to make? If not, is there a second? Motion to recommend the draft as presented in a second.
I motion to recommend.
Oh, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? No. Thank you. Next apparent task is any public comment? Jake, is there anyone waiting to?
We do have, we do have a handful of attendees. I, I see a couple of hands that are being raised. As we've done in our past meetings, I'll call on each person that I have, that I see that has their hand raised and we'll give them an opportunity to comment. First up, I have Theodore Eli.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me. I I would just like to point out that you know, and I'm going to change the discussion a little bit from the way I did last time. I, I recognize it kind of going uphill here, but the problem i- is that the ordinance as it is has a lot of errors in it. And some of them were even pointed out by Mr. Schmenti in the last meeting where he questioned whether or not would be anybody in charge of these regulations and how the people, how these violations of these regulations would be reported. First of all, there is a, no one, as far as I know, is in charge of regulating Airbnbs at the present time. And no one has ever done it as far as I know. There is questions too about the change of regulations and, or it's charge of the regulations, who's going to be in charge in the future? What's also, what's being done about health regulations like COVID and that, which we have people coming in from other states, other areas, which there's nothing in the regulation that deals with COVID. How, how many Airbnb's are they're going to be allowed in a single-family neighborhood? Is it unlimited? Is there a limit? How is the limit going to be enforced? And does it matter whether or not, you know, 80% of a neighborhood does not want Airbnb's? I guess that doesn't do it. Also, there are, as I say, you know, this is being done as some sort of tourism promotion, which if you look around, there's hotels all over the place that are even charging less than what these Airbnb's are charging. There's no real need for additional accommodation for hotels. You've been presented with people who are in fact, a, you know, claiming that their Airbnb's are, are safe and, and that sort of thing. But you know, who, who's going to say about the Airbnb's in the future? I just, I just think it's going to change the character of the neighborhood and it's in, it is in violation of the municipal planning code to change the character of a neighborhood through zoning legislation. And, you know, I'd refer you to the planning code for the exact language. But that's all I have to say. I said, you know, you're going to do it anyways, regardless of what the effect is going to be on neighborhoods. Apparently that's not of a concern to the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, anybody else?
Hello? Can everybody hear me? This Claudine theme, I just had a question on whether there was a document that I was supposed to see that had revisions on it. I don't, there weren't any exhibits with the agenda. So if there were actually changes or anything to the document, I don't, I don't have a copy of that. And I didn't know if any adjustments were made to R1 based on our, our concerns last month.
Jake, is there a location? Think and obtain a copy of the document?
Not posted online at this point. As far as revisions, there, there weren't major revisions to the draft that was posted. The, the previous draft that was posted online.
So I guess my question is then things like 150 is still on there, in which case it can't be a business. Then you're saying it cannot be, you know, a business issue, you know, that someone's running because you're not going to keep up a property and only offer 150 nights a year. So if that's still in there, like I just saying, what's the final thing that's being recommended? We don't have a posting. The same as what was before, then is the process, it just goes to city council that way to be voted on?
Yeah, as far as the 150 days that was amended and to 180 days as one of the conditions for R1 and R1A districts.
Is there a motivation for that? I mean, what is it trying to, to say? It's still 180 days would not, I wouldn't keep my property for that. I mean, is there a motivation for limiting the number of days?
If I could step in, the motivation behind limiting the number of days in the, solely in the R1 and the R1A zoning districts is to just have a little bit more of a restriction on the low-density neighborhoods as opposed to the other zoning districts.
And maybe Tessa, there were a few other changes, if I'm not mistaken, that you could go over. I don't know that those were. And then if someone could just explain the process, once it moves from planning commission to city council, that might help some of the other questions that might be coming up.
Sure. In reference to the changes that we made to the ordinance. So we did change the cumulative days from 150 to 180. We did remove the condition of having at least 600 feet from the nearest property line of any other short-term rental. And we also added a definition to owner occupied. And that stipulation did remain under the R1 and R1A zoning districts.
Okay, I think that helps that this is designed for owner, owner occupied properties are permitted to have short-term rentals in the R1, R1A, the buffer requirements of 600 feet, you said, were removed. And that there's a cumulative maximum days that can be the, the, that it can be rented for 100, it was 180 days, you said, just to be clear. All right. And then if maybe some explanation about the process, once it moves from planning commission, which of course, planning commission is a recommending body. And then it goes to city council as presented. Jake, the, or Tessa, the, the date that they might hold the public hearing at city council and would, it might be helpful if people could understand that process.
Well, as far as the process is concerned, once the planning commission makes a recommendation to council, that recommendation is, is put in a formal memo and forwarded to city council as that will occur over the next couple of days here this week. It's then, since it is an amendment or proposed amendment to the city zoning ordinance, councils obligated to provide at least 30 days of notice of a public hearing to review those potential changes, except public comment on those changes. So council will not be meeting, council will likely not even schedule a public hearing until the first meeting of May, in which case they would not be able to hold the public hearing until June and then take action on the public hearing or the recommendations and comments they heard from the public hearing until the meetings following that. And generally, since it's an ordinance amendment, excuse my rattly voice here. They typically would have two readings on any ordinance amendment. So by way of a general schedule, any zoning ordinance amendment would not actually become effective until likely sometime in July. If the public meeting is held in June.
Right.
And of course, the, the draft itself will be available for review during that 30-day review period prior to the public hearing being held.
Thanks, Jake. That was helpful.
Thank you.
Is my audio still on?
Yes.
I just, Tessa referred to adding a definition of owner occupied. Would you share that?
Yes, let me just pull that part up. So we have it defined as a dwelling that is listed as a property owner's primary residence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Claudine, did you have any other comments?
No, I just, you know, I, like I said, I just feel like the ordinance is making it not be able to be a business. And so I know Benjamin Henry must not be here today, but like for somebody like him who has six of these, basically, he would not be able to do that. So I just, I, that's all I just, I, the way the recommendation is, then that's fine. I'm just trying to understand that that's the motivation.
That's only an R1 though, not R1A.
Well, that's also the most desirable location for the people that want these. So.
Thank you, Claudine. On next up, we have Lucinda Miles.
Hi, like everybody asks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just would like to thank the planning commission and members of the zoning board and the city solicitor for your time and patience and professionalism in this matter. You have had to listen to a lot of conversation over the past several months and take so much information into consideration. I really do appreciate your knowledge and expertise in drawing up this ordinance. Our motivation from day one of promoting and lobbying for short-term rentals in the city of Erie is because we have witnessed what a positive impact they have had on Erie and the visitors who come here. We care about all of Erie and its growth. It was very important to us to give you accurate and honest information. And I just, for Mr. Eli's peace of mind, I just wanted to convey to him that Airbnb has strict COVID guidelines, which we are, we are adhered to go by. And even if they didn't have guidelines, none of us really want to get COVID. So we are pretty careful about take care of our property. But I just wanted to thank you all again for all your time in this matter.
Thanks, Lucinda. If there are any other folks present who wanted to make any comments, please use that. If there are any other folks present who wanted to make any comments, please use that raise hand function. I'll give you a second to search for that. Seeing none, it doesn't appear we have any other public comments to be registered, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there any other business to be considered? If not, I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you all.